All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's 5:30. And we are waiting for Barbara and Jermaine, I think will both be joining us here shortly, but we'll go ahead and start with the work session. Dr. Beatty, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Trustee Skaggs and Board members. Glad to be with you again today.
We'd hope to be in person, but next month's in person, right?
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. We had intended and planned for us to be in person today, but our schedule for, you may recall you all approving the equipment, sound equipment, audio equipment for the Penn Valley campus. And we want to make sure that we have all of the technology set to accommodate the environment of having people zoom in and having you there in person. That took a little longer than we expected, so we will definitely have that installed and finalized by next month. We wanted to offer condolences. I'm not sure if Trustee Martin is, I'm sorry, Trustee Washington is on the mind, but Trustee Washington lost her brother Eddie Williams, and he was an MCC alum and KU alum, a very, very polished career in broadcasting and was in the Middle East for a very long time as a broadcaster and an award-winning journalist. So our prayers and sympathies are with Trustee Washington. I saw her yesterday, and she is working with her family to make arrangements. And so as those details become available, we'll make sure you're aware.
And we're sending flowers from the board.
Yes, I believe those have already been sent. Our board calendar, as I've mentioned, we've got our next meeting. We are planning at the Penn Valley campus commencement. It's the most wonderful time of the year is coming up. It is at the Starlight Theater, and we have a lot of the plans underway. Our speaker selected the plan for entering and being seated in a very safe environment as well. And of course, the MCC trustees leadership statewide leadership meeting is also occurring. We have our foundation report. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Ramirez to provide that report.
Thank you, Dr. Beatty, and good evening, Board of Trustees. I wanted to give you a campaign update. We have submitted three local grant requests to private foundations totaling over $1 million, so we hope to hear from them soon. Of some grants that we already submitted and heard back from, we have given verbal agreement of awarding of $400,000 from the Sherman Family Foundation, and this will help support our dual credit hours for students that are high school juniors. So we're extremely excited about this new partnership with the Sherman Family Foundation, and this will be over three years for that $400,000. And if all goes well, which I know it will, this could be a longstanding relationship with the Sherman Family Foundation, so kudos.
Is that $1,200,000 or $400,000, $130,000 a year?
So $400,000 over the three years.
Over the three.
Total, yes.
So. We also.
I'm sorry. I was just going to give you praise, Dr. Beatty, for pivoting with that Sherman Family Foundation request, because really, that's what helped us make this partnership possible. So I'll turn it over to you for a moment there.
Oh, they, we started down a path, and it didn't seem like they were interested. But remembering the passion that the Sherman, Mrs. Sherman has with education and our reimagining how we are doing our house, high school enrollments, we'll give you a presentation on that next month. It was a perfect fit, so.
It really was. It was, it was great. We also, I got a couple more things before we get into the distinguished alum, and I apologize, so I'll try to hurry. The whole family foundation, we have a request out for them that we will submit at the end of the month, and then we will support it, bring it forward to their board in June. So we appreciate the whole family giving us some time to review our requests with them. And we have some upcoming meetings with U.S. Trust Private Bank as well as H&R Block Foundation. And as always, everyone, you can go to MCC.edu backslash path forward to make any time campaign gifts, so.
And the donation amount here, the 5.7 million, all those things you described earlier would be above and beyond that, right?
Correct, correct, correct. Making great progress.
Right, yeah, good job.
Thank you, thank you. So this commencement, we will be able to obviously be in person, but also to give our inaugural MCC Foundation Distinguished Alumni Award. And we've given these awards in the past, but never at commencement. So I think it's a wonderful opportunity to highlight to students and their guests, our distinguished alums. And so this was a nomination that we actually received last year, but because of COVID wasn't able to pursue going forward. And so it's with great honor and pleasure to identify Dr. Eric Thompson. He's the Principal Electrical Engineer, Quality Assurance Engineer in the Engineering Department at Honeywell. And I have to tell you, he was overjoyed, seriously, overjoyed about this honor, and we're excited to have him. And he is phenomenal in the way that he has, he has a technical fellowship. He's got patents. He's, he's got paper awards. I mean, it's extensive. So we are really, can't say enough. It's going to be a great commencement to honor him.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Informational items, as we do every month, we want to give you a Capitol Projects update. Dr. Chrishell.
Thank you, Chancellor Beatty, President Skaggs, and Board members. This evening, I take this opportunity to update everyone on our Capitol Projects. So what you see before you is the ongoing schedule that we will continue to present to you. What you should notice, or the only numbers that really change, are the construction percent complete as well as the construction invoices. But you will see that everything is on target. The engineering tech building is progressing along nicely as the lead project. And one thing that we will be doing to amend this particular form is, in the case of the Advanced Technical Skills Institute or the ATS I, the 17 million does include the one change order for $683,000. So we'll put a footnote to that particular amount so that you can keep track of the, any change orders, unless you want us to put a column in there and show the one change order at this point. But at this point in time, I would also give you a heads up that it is our intent that in the May meeting that we will be bringing before the board some additional options on the ATS I, the Advanced Technical Skills Institute, for potential enhancements of the overall project. Again, these are not required, but I think it is in the best interest of the, of the college and the board to kind of look at these and decide, you know, whether we want to explore these enhancements to the overall project. Some of them are alternates that we can, you know, pursue to enhance the project, and we plan to bring those to you in May. Happy to answer any questions at this time.
Looks good. Thank you.
I noticed that we had a question in the chat from Trustee Osborne. We'll check into that foundation that you mentioned, but we currently have not met with that foundation. The redistricting update. So on the agenda today will be to accept the and vote on the election results. And so that will move us into the next phase of the process, not only because of the election, but also because of the 10-year statute mandated that we do the redistricting. We used Arc Bridge Consulting in the past and looking, revisiting their capabilities. They are a very well-reputable firm that is very familiar with doing this type of work. So we're planning to move forward with that consulting firm. The redistricting committee plan to be formulated and conducted by the board and Trustee, Board Chair, Trustee Skaggs, do you want to mention any plans that you have on how you all would move forward now? Or you will talk about that with the board individually?
Yeah, we're talking about the three names we need submitted and that we're trying to submit. And let me ask, I, maybe this is a question for Cindy. Cindy, do we know the drop dead date when we're supposed to have those? I know it's been changing, but do we have a drop dead date? Or have they even let us know yet when they want?
They have not, they have not.
They have not, okay. So I'd like to get three names of the, from board members to submit and just have them ready. I think if, you know, if you've got some ideas over this next month, just kind of feed them to me. I would like to have somebody from up north and then probably two from down south. This probably makes, makes sense. Also, taking, if we can, take into consideration our new, our new boundaries as well. And so again, just, just three names. So if, again, as you're thinking about it over the next several weeks, if you have them, you can call me or email me, and, and we can discuss them. And in a perfect world, we'd have, you know, three names that kind of readily came to the top. You know, if we get five or six or seven names, then we'll just have to, just kind of go through each one of them and just kind of vote on them. But, so again, just if you've got some ideas or thoughts, just, just let me know.
President Skaggs?
Yes, ma'am.
I know the three are the names that we're able to submit and will be part of the committee, but don't we have to submit additional names so that the, who is it, CBHE Chancellor?
Yes.
Select?
Yeah, but we're still waiting on direction from them still, Ellen, on, on what that's going to look like. So, so this initial three are ours for sure. And so you're right, we believe we'll have an opportunity to submit additional names later, but at this point, there's not been any communication to us about that.
Thank you.
Dr. Beatty, did I miss?
No, I think you're, you've hit it right on.
Okay.
And then once we, in terms of that process, well, once we get more information from them, and then the names are submitted by the board, we'll submit those to CBHE for. And they're not, they're actually not called CBHE anymore. It's dude or something. But anyway, well, we'll get those forwarded.
Dr. Beatty, I did have, I did have one question about the recommending, what types of folks, do they have to have a particular background or?
Just like, just like when we did redistricting in the legislature. I mean, it's just whoever we come up to with as a board that we think would be good community leaders or people that are familiar with our areas or our region. So no, so there's no.
They don't have a desire to be on the board.
Yeah.
They wouldn't be able to run.
That they, yeah, they wouldn't be able to run.
I was thinking, when you were, when you were talking, Trent, I was thinking of some of our former board members, you know, that no longer serving, maybe they've moved on to different things. We had a couple of members that we might, if we don't have anyone else to think about right now.
Yeah, no, I think that's good. I think it's good. Mike, if you got one or two in particular, just think about it and just give me a call.
Okay.
Well, and I'll, is this before the month in May, I'll kind of circulate a list of names that I have, and then we can discuss them at the next meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right. A regular meeting agenda overview of items, and we'll go to the finance report with Dr. Chrishell.
Thank you, Chancellor Beatty, President Skaggs, Board members. This evening, I take the opportunity to update you on MCC's financial status. What you see before you is the ongoing chart or table showing how we expense by budget unit. I call your attention to the lower right-hand corner, the 67.1% with the understanding that the calculated target should be 75%, which hopefully gives a clear picture of how the college is doing very well containing overall expenses. The second graphic, once again, shows you how we've, we've somewhat deviated, but I think we're still following the cycle for revenue expenses very well. You will see that on an individual monthly basis, there are the ups and downs based on how we book expenses and revenues and the snapshot. Overall, we're underneath, well, under our expected or projected spend. But you will see is the $7.9 million that we incurred this month is a little over with the understanding that the previous month was a little under or a lot under. One of the things that I will mention is that one of the things that we, and it's all again, how it got booked, but one of the things I think might be of interest for the board is that we did well over the period of the first two or the second two weeks of February during that very cold spell. You may remember that at that time, there were some issues in the state of Texas, which then had repercussions throughout the, the United States, more specifically, the central states, natural gas. We hit, so for those two weeks in the, in the month of February, the second and the third week, we hit our peak in pricing for natural gas. We happen to have contracts in place, but that contract has a range, and so we hit the high peak. We could have been at an expense well into six figures, but because we had a contract in place, what we normally would have spent over that two-week period would have been $11,000, we wound up spending $60,000 for two weeks of natural gas. So just kind of, you know, and, and we were one of the lucky ones. Most of the people are talking to Evergy or talking about payments on how they can pay for those two weeks of natural gas where we were able to contain it. Unfortunately, that's going to wipe out a good portion of our utility savings that we've been capturing due to the, the building closures or due to virtual. But I just wanted you to be aware of that, so it doesn't become a shock.
And you may have mentioned this, I apologize if I missed it, that we benefited in that way because we had a locked-in rate.
Correct.
Don, is in those numbers on the revenue side, does any of that include PPP or recognizing PPP dollars that have been forgiven?
No, it does not.
So if I look here, then if I look at January and February, my revenues are actually about $39 million compared to $37 million in 2020.
Correct, and that's due to, you know, a good collection on our taxes and really kind of looking at how we compare in tuition and fees as well as the state appropriations which are coming in. So it, it does not reflect it because those are one-time as opposed to operational.
Okay.
We've got one slip sheet. We had to make some edits to the administrators' attachment. We had some new appointments that were effective immediately, and so we wanted to make sure that their contracts were amended to reflect that new appointment that was effective on Monday. And so that was the edit that was made to the personnel item. These are the consent agenda items. I can discuss a little bit more with any of these that you may want to discuss at more length. The equity, I'm sorry, the acceptance of external funds is us launching our Equity Institute, just focusing on equity in the classroom, teaching and learning. Relationship with the Royals branding partnership, item 5.8. Continuing to upgrade our computers, our food services, that's our elite part, our partner with Elite Foods, I guess, I just know them as Elite. Maybe it's management, I don't know. But that's our food service, that contract was, we're renewing, renewing that. We're extending the hotspots service through the summer because we're still doing some summer classes. We had only done that through May. And our lease agreement, this is for Concord to get some garage space because they will still be in the building next door that they own to Broadway Plaza, but they will be ending their, their time and hour building will be ending. Oh, am I smiling? I'm sorry. That's the, that's the, that's the consent agenda. And the allied health agreements, you know, we provide services, opportunities for our students to get practical experience out in the field. There's no questions on the consent agenda that closes out my work session report, and I'd like the record to show that that was 20 minutes. Chair?
For everything. All right, then we'll go into the regular meeting, and we'll go ahead and call it to order. And we'll go straight into the chancellor's report. Dr. Beatty?
All right, since we're on a roll, we'll keep it moving here. We are going to do this year the Wolfpack, an inaugural year of the Wolfpack Team Award. In future years, this will be a recognition of a team or unit that goes above and beyond. Future recipients will receive a hosted lunch from the chancellor or lunch with the chancellor onsite, a plaque with recognition from the, from the board at the Board of Trustees meeting. But this year, this year, all faculty, full-time faculty, staff, and administrators are going to be recognized with a one-time benefit of a $1,200 award because this was such a unique year. And in addition to that, we will, we are doing a commendation resolution that if it's okay, Trustee Skaggs, this is item 2.5, but I'd like to, since it's associated with this award, I'd like to read the commendation now, aspects of the commendation now, if that, if that's okay.
So, so you want to, you want to go ahead and do 2.5 now, then? Go ahead and read it, and then we'll vote on it. We'll vote on it when?
Yeah, we can vote on it as you go through, but I'd like to read it now, if that's okay.
That's fine, yes.
All right, I've pulled out, there's a lot that happened, but I've pulled out some things. Whereas Metropolitan Community College faced two of the most critical challenges of the 105-year history of the college simultaneously, a cyber attack and the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas on March 11, 2020, information technology personnel discovered that MCC was victim of a cyber attack which paralyzed the core business functions. Whereas on March 12, 2020, the chancellor was notified of a student's potential exposure to the COVID-19 virus resulting in a closure of the college through spring break and an extended week as well. Whereas the chancellor immediately formed and led an emergency management team. Whereas the MCC information technology personnel worked through the night and for the next 30 days, including spring break, without any days off to restore the mission-critical systems. Whereas the police department, due to that same attack on our systems, the police department personnel worked 12-hour shifts and 24-hour coverage to be sure that our MCC facilities were protected absent the software that normally does so. Whereas departments district-wide recreated lost data and established new and more effective work groups and processes. Whereas the Risk and Compliance Department, in conjunction with Legal, led the development of a pandemic index to supplement the business continuity plan that was created. Whereas, which I'll do aware, I'm going to add a little bit, whereas the board mandated that there would be a business continuity plan, which was very timely. Whereas facility services employees worked onsite daily through 2020 spring break and throughout the pandemic to ensure sanitizing and installing hundreds of MCC branded signs and markers. Whereas the COVID-19 response demanded a significant number of additional technology needs where IT personnel purchased, prepared, and deployed laptops, hotspots, cameras, webcams, employees, for employees and for students. Whereas within 14 days, MCC Online created and offered training in multiple aspects of the virtual instruction with four virtual sessions daily, averaging 50 people per session. Whereas MCC swiftly transformed its processes, programs, classes, events, and offices to a virtual environment with faculty converting thousands of their face-to-face classes on the drop of a dime to a virtual platform. Whereas student services personnel, along with deans, vice presidents, and directors and campus operations coordinated efforts to learn what students needed during the pandemic through surveys, outreach, phone calls. Whereas the MCC community provided frequent communications from the human resources and marketing and communication teams regarding the college's response to the pandemic. Whereas human resources personnel provided guidance and assistance for employees competing, completing ADA and FMLA requests as necessary and associated with the pandemic. Whereas the finance department, I'm not sure, I think, oh, and that contact tracing that we ended up doing there. Whereas the finance department managed over $24 million in federal funding very quickly with changing rules associated with that funding to make sure that it was distributed as appropriate to meet the college needs. Whereas in the face of the pandemic, instructors, faculty, members that were unable to hold classes virtually, IT and facilities and athletic department personnel and many others volunteered to assist with the distribution of technologies. So the students and staff, and they staffed single entry points and worked onsite during the pandemic. Whereas the college personnel swiftly responded with dedication and resolve to identify and deploy avenues, despite the extraordinary avenues to make sure the college still ran without missing a beat despite the extraordinarily challenging times that we were facing at home and at work. Trustee Skaggs?
Whereas the Board of Trustees recognizes and greatly appreciates the historical significance of these efforts, accomplishments, and the tireless dedication of MCC's employees to the success of their students. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby commends and thanks the employees of the Metropolitan Community College, whose remarkably industrious and collaborative work together during an unprecedented time of extraordinary challenge resulted the continuance of the college's mission, a day-to-day operations and student success. And be it further resolved that this commendation resolution shall be entered into the official minutes of the Board of Trustees of the Junior College District of Metropolitan Kansas City, Missouri, and that a copy of the resolution shall be presented to all employees who participated in this tremendous and successful undertaking.
Getting teary-eyed, just reliving it all. Many thanks to everybody. We appreciate you.
Absolutely.
Wipe my tears.
What a credit year.
For the staff, and I think it's a great idea to recognize their efforts. And I appreciate the board being a part of it and letting us play whatever small role we have. So I'm, I'm really blown away by the idea. I think it's awesome. So congratulations to all of our staff. They deserve it.
Yeah, I just would take one more opportunity to add one thing. I can tell you from serving on national organizations, sitting here in many meetings, even to this day throughout the state, we were ahead in a lot of ways of many other colleges in terms of how they managed and handled things. I encouraged a small team to participate in a, I think it was a national symposium, and Rosemary, our CHRO, came back and said, "Dr. Beatty, you will be surprised that everything he mentioned that we should be doing, we had already done it." So just. So, just phenomenal.
Terrific. Thank you for that.
I also want to thank Cindy Johnson. It takes a lot of time to put these commendations together, and this one especially to gather the information that was included, took a lot. I think trustee Martin can attest to what goes into writing those. So that abbreviated, that was an abbreviated version. The final version, every employee will receive a copy of that final version on the pretty paper and signed appropriately. So thanks to Cindy for coordinating and developing that, and I will move on.
Chancellor?
Yes.
You underscored your compliment to Cindy for producing that. And I've been thinking, if we ever have a time capsule, this resolution needs to be in it.
What a great idea.
Thanks.
Especially since we've got a couple of buildings that we're constructing right now. We can put it in a, I love that time. Last comment on this. Oh, is somebody else trying to say something because I can't see you?
I was going to say, if you're going to do that, you should put the masks too, the MCC mask.
Yeah. I think there's a COVID time capsule that has a number of different things that could go in it. I love that idea. I've been invited to write a chapter of a book, and I labeled the chapter Educational Leadership Dur-, no, Leadership and an Educational Tsunami. And I'm using our successful experience and sharing that in this chapter of the book. It's called Urban Voices, something, something, something. I don't have the full title in my head. So that'll be coming out probably at the end of the year, next year. And so MCC and our total experience and the leadership that everybody did will be highlighted for everyone in the world to see. All right, I also wanted to share with you the amount of professional development that has been happening for the last year and a half, two years. We've been, well, for the last almost three years, we've been walking what we call the Expanded Leadership Team. That's all the mid-level leaders and the executive cabinet, deans, vice presidents, through a leadership development series. And these are some of the texts that we have been using. We also use John Maxwell, 21 Laws of Leadership. But this middle one focuses on emotional intelligence. Of course, we're a matrix organization, and we were initially and still do in some cases, bump our heads in what that involves. And so those are facilitated by me. Sometimes we have invited speakers come in, sometimes we have people within the organization that will do presentations. But it's been very, very powerful. We have another one tomorrow. In fact, we usually take an afternoon, or I think we've reduced it now to two and a half hour session where we walk through some type of professional development. And every member gets one of these texts as we go through it. So I just wanted to share some of that good energy that's happening as well behind the scenes. We have a name. Thank you, trustee Brown. Sitting at lunch one time with trustee Brown, and we were doing some brainstorming, and he tossed out elements of this that we are now adopting. The Advanced Technical Skills Institute will be the name of the TruSt property, the TruSt facility. So on all of the items, we're going to start referring to it as the Advanced Technical Skills Institute so that everybody starts to get used to that.
Thank you. Can I, can I take free classes as a?
We, we have-
We'll mention.
We have benefits, educational benefits for all of our employees and board members. So I'll follow up with you on those. We did return to campus after, I highlighted the specific date, but each campus had back-to-campus activities. So this is just highlighting a couple. They had refreshments for employees when they came back, and they had outdoor activities. So everybody's come back. I haven't heard anything, so I think it has gone very smoothly. We also want to highlight some regional employees and some awards that they are receiving. A distinguished alumni award for the Alpha Phi Sigma chapter, and that is Jacob McQuerry and Sidney Lee. Our laboratory specialist has been invited to serve on a peer review panel, and these are very competitive opportunities for our employees. So we are pleased to highlight her for the Department of Agriculture. Brian Hurley is also one of our computer science instructors who's been awarded in the past with a number of accolades, and he has been invited to participate on a national council as well. So MCC has got a lot of national seats and recognized for their work and the talent that we have. And your own chancellor has our, Matt Beam, oh, what is the name of that? Anyway, they, the company, our consultant nominated me for the Persevering Advocate Award, and I won that award, and also have just been recognized as the Inspirational Leader of the Year. We'll make the board aware of both of these engagements, May 12 for the Persevering Advocate, and I think July 18 in Springfield is when they have the luncheon for the Inspirational Leader of the Year Award. We will now go to our faculty senate report.
Chancellor Beatty, faculty, staff, administrators, board of trustees, and general public, thank you for all, thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to address this group. This will be my last opportunity to address this body as president of the Academic Senate and as a full-time employee of MCC. On May 13, we will celebrate commencement with our students, and some of us will commence with our retirement plans. That said, I wish to thank the commencement committee for all their hard work in planning what might be the most difficult commencement in our history. It will represent a new beginning and a fitting end to a difficult year. Seneca said, "If anything can happen, it can happen today," and it did, and we are ready to be done with it and start fresh. Let the commencement speeches begin. I'll start with mine. On May 17, 2014, Admiral William H. McRaven addressed the graduating class of the University of Texas at Austin and delivered what may be the most well-known commencement address of our time. He told the graduating class to make their bed each morning. What an idiot. Talk about the tyranny of low expectations. I'm going on record right here, right now, to say that when I retire from MCC, I do not care if those of you who remain here carry on to carry on our mission, make your beds. But there is something I do care about. If I had to pick a single issue from the last 22 years, it would be this. I wish I had done more to express appreciation for the people who work here, faculty, staff, administrators, and trustees, and to make everyone feel like they belong, including those with whom I had disagreements. No, really, I mean especially with those with whom I had disagreements. Let me borrow from another commencement address from Marina Kagan, who told the 2012 graduating class at Yale, "We don't have a word for the opposite of loneliness, but if we did, I would say that's what I want in life, and that's what I'm scared of losing when we wake up tomorrow and leave this place. It's this feeling that there are people, an abundance of people, who are in this together, who belong on your team." Kagan tragically died in a car accident on the following Saturday. She was 22. Seneca said, "If anything can happen, it can happen today. This is a good place to work and study, and even if you don't make your bed, you can grow to love it, especially when you feel like you belong here." Phoebe Stone in Romeo and Juliet writes, "Not belonging is a terrible feeling. It feels awkward, and it hurts as if you were wearing someone else's shoes." Nope, we don't have a word for the opposite of loneliness, but we do have an experience for it, is the experience of belonging. Thank you for the last 22 years and making me feel like I belong here.
Jim, thank you so much. Your service has been tremendous. Thank you for your service. Dr. Wilcox, I'm sorry I referred to you as Mr. Wilcox. Dr. Wilcox, thank you so much for your service to the college. Thank you for your service as faculty senate, faculty senate president. It has been my plum-pleas and pleasure to work with you this last year. We, I think, worked well together. I think you have set the standard of how agendas and meetings could be handled with that time that's so valuable with the chancellor and how we move things forward. I really appreciate the lines of communication that we had during this past year and years before that. I really appreciate your service. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Skaggs, that concludes my report. If I can find where my thing is here.
We'll, then we'll go to the-
Which, by the way, was in ten minutes.
We'll go to the consent agenda. I'll take a motion to approve item 2.1.
Jermaine Reed, so moved.
Jermaine made some motion. Is there a second?
Barbara Washington, second.
Barbara Washington made the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any, any opposed?
Any opposed?
Okay, motion passes.
Motion passes.
Right, we'll go to item 2.4, Certification of Election Results. Dr. Beatty.
We are pleased to present to you for acceptance and action the results of the April 6 election. We went after eight districts, unprecedented, never done before, and one, three, three of those invited, that we invited, accepted our invitation, never done before. And so we're very pleased to welcome Green Valley School District, Liberty Public School District, and the Oak Grove School District into our district, and I recommend approval.
Take a motion to approve?
Before, before we do that, I'll make, I would like to make a quick comment, and that is, congratulations to you, Dr. Beatty, and to all the staff and all the hard work that went into this. Big congratulations, and with that, I'll so move for the approval of this item number two.
Number two point two.
Barbara Washington, second.
Is there any discussion?
Any discussion?
All in favor, say aye.
Say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Any opposed?
Okay, motion passes. Dr. Beatty, are you getting?
I am getting the echo. I'm not sure. I'm not sure why.
All right, if you, if everybody's not talking, please put it on mute. Maybe there's, maybe there's an issue there. Okay, Dr. Beatty, item 2.5, Board of Trustees' Commendation, we just, we did that. So I will take a motion to approve item 2.5.
Barbara Washington, so moved.
Jermaine Reed, second.
Okay, Jermaine seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. We'll go to item 5.1, which is the Treasures Report.
Treasures Report was presented in the work session, and I think we had good discussion and answered any questions, and I recommend approval.
I'll take a motion to approve.
Move approval of the Treasures Report.
Is there a second?
Jermaine Reed, second. Jermaine Reed, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? There's no opposed, so motion passes. We'll go to item 5.2, Tuition and Fees. Dr. Beatty.
In February, we made adjustments to our tuition fee model in two ways. We created a flat base rate model for in-district and a tiered model for 15 programs. Now we are going to the out-of-district base fee, and it will go from $191 per credit hour rate to $228 per credit hour rate, and recommend approval.
I'll take a motion to approve. No move. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. I know we've had several discussions on this. Is there any more discussion on this?
President Skaggs, one question.
Please.
Chancellor, when will the new tuition rates take effect?
With summer enrollment. I should have mentioned that with the, is that correct? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Catherine happens to be in my office. I should have mentioned with the, those that voted in-district, that new tuition rate for them will take rate, take place in the summer. This out-of-district tuition change will take place with the fall.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Thanks for clarifying that, Dr. Beatty. So, so summer is when the people that voted, they're, it's, it's this next, next go-around.
Yeah, they, they get immediate benefit tomorrow as soon as, now that the vote has gone through.
I did have a question, and I was trying to think about it. Maybe you already answered it, but we approved it, we approved the out-of-district rate increase a little while ago, and then we're increasing it now. What is the reason, what is the reason we're doing that?
Trustee Brown, we approved a in-district increase in February. We did not do the out-of-district.
Right.
You're referring to this year.
Right, we, we talked about it, Mike, but we didn't, we didn't do it, though.
Oh, I see. Okay. And then the reason, the reason we're, the reason we're doing it, what, why are we doing this now?
We're raising the in-district, well, first of all, we're aligning the out-of-district tuition base rate with the new tuition model. And then secondly, we want to, normally institutions have a percentage of difference that is of some significance between the in-district and out-of-district rate when you look at tuition rates across the country. So there's some alignment there. And we always do in-district, I'm sorry, we always evaluate tuition every year, and we make those changes usually in February. We waited on the out-of-district because we wanted to give our gift, we, we delayed the out-of-district until now. We normally bring them together, but we, we waited.
Okay, I understand. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Trent.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Right, motion passes. We'll go to item 5.3.
Item 5.3 is for microscopes. These microscopes are used with our training with our Honeywell client and require a specific specification, and these now meet the requirement. You may recall approving microscopes in a previous meeting. After that approval, it was, came to our attention that they do not meet the specialized needs of the- to our attention that they do not meet the specialized needs of the training, and so those were not purchased, and we are going after the appropriate aligned, appropriately aligned, like, equipment for the training. I recommend approval.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve item 5.3.
Move approval of 5.3.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
President Skaggs, a question, please. Chancellor, do you know how many microscopes are we purchasing for this amount?
Twenty.
Twenty?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Twenty, twenty microscopes and two something zoom-specific thing that's needed for the microscopes. It's a bunch. I have the invoice, I have the invoice here, but I, there's words on here I can't even pronounce, but it's 20 microscopes. And let me put it this way, ancillary additional equipment to operation, to utilize the microscopes. There's two pieces in addition that would be added to that.
Are they electronic microscopes? Does anyone know, or regular? They must be, or you wouldn't need that additional equipment.
The includes LED lighting.
They are not electronic.
They are not?
No. They're, they're standard, but they're more, they're geared for the soldering labs, so they have to have the swing arms, as well as the visual capabilities. So electron microscope is a whole different.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I thought perhaps you got a good bargain on some electronic microscopes.
Yeah, electron microscope is a much more intensive piece of equipment.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
All right, is there any, many other discussions or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We'll go on to item 5.4.
Item 5.4 is for water treatment services that help us with corrosion, sediment, fungus, algae, bacteria, and all those other things that are highlighted in the item, and I recommend approval.
I'll take a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
There's a second? Okay. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We're going to item 5.5.
Item 5.5 is for furniture purchases that will be, and related services that'll be used throughout the district. This is a part of the district's furniture replacement plan. We've got, you know, historically, we've had large amounts of individual spends, and historically, those spends have been, last year, for example, it was $334,000. 2019, it was $461,000. 2018, it was $324,000. That was a combination of individual purchases and district purchases. So we're trying to work toward centralizing as much of those purchases as possible. We base that figure on historical spends, and as well, that we are making some changes to furniture to accommodate our new environment, and I recommend approval.
I'll take a motion to approve. Don't move. Is there a second?
Second.
So, so Dr. Beatty, in essence, though, with this, you're just, every year, you have somewhere between $300,000 and $400,000 that we spend on these items. So we're just kind of funding, funding them as we go, then.
Correct.
President Skaggs?
Yes, please.
Question? Chancellor, if we, this is a five-year projected purchases, the way I'm considering it. Is that not right? Four additional one-year renewals. So if we use, or we expend the same amount of money, we're talking about a $2 million, roughly, $2 million purchase. I understand why you would want to do this in sort of a coordinated fashion. Is there, or will there be some sort of plan for furniture replacement? Because this, this furniture is not student-related. We made a lot of those purchases because of the COVID, and CARE dollars went to that. But this, I'm assuming, is truly more office furniture, isn't it?
No, they, I mean, yes, we did do some, a lot of spending and investment with the CARE's dollars, but we have a lot of furniture still in the classroom. So this, this furniture is for all furniture types, classroom, office, waiting areas, sticky spaces for students, work tables. It's, it's all different types of furniture. We have, so similar to the computers, we have, we're working toward slowly implementing a district, a college-wide plan, similar to computers, where they get on a cycle of replacement. So to Trustee Skaggs' point, and I think somewhat your point, every year, we will have furniture come up that needs to be replaced. We've done a lot with furniture this year to get to the point of also accommodating the pandemic and having wiped down furniture and so forth. But this is part of our general plan of what we would be replacing every year. To your question about the contract, this is a one-year base contract. It has four additional options for renewal, but the, I mean, you can look at it as it's got the potential of $2 million, but we are only requesting authority for the base year.
I understand that, Chancellor. Thank you. Sometimes things just tend to flow if there's the possibility. One more quick question. There are several fund sources listed here, general deferred maintenance bond and grant. Can you identify what grant might be a source for this purchase?
The HERF or CAREs, now they're called HERF dollars, the, the HERF, Higher Education Relief Funds. We just still have to wait on the guidance. So we might be leveraging some of the bond dollars as we're doing for some of the new buildings to furnish and outfit some of the new buildings. But where we can, we're going to leverage the HERF dollars. And then there's some that furniture or equipment that might be out of place and qualify for deferred maintenance. So that's why there's so many different pots there. Whichever we can, I mean, obviously, if we can leverage the grant dollars to take care of most of it, that'll be the first pot that we would tap, so that we can utilize bond and deferred maintenance dollars for other things that have greater, greater demand and need, because we have such a demand for deferred maintenance.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We're going to item 5.6.
The patient simulator, this is to replace a patient simulator in the virtual hospital. We've tried to maintain this innovative technology, and we have to often replace this expensive equipment, which is required for teaching and learning, and keeping pace with the work environment. And I recommend approval. This one comes with a warranty.
Okay. I'll take a motion to approve.
Move approval of 5.6.
Is there a second?
Second.
Home second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. We're going to item 5.7, moving services. Dr. Beatty?
We've, we are, as we begin to transition programs into the new facilities and moving offices, we need to do a contract with moving services. We had a couple of bids received, and given all of the criteria that were necessary and scheduling, we've got two companies that we want to enter into a contract with and recommend approval on that.
I'll take a motion to approve. Don't move. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Dr. Beatty, you have anything?
Before you adjourn the meeting, I just want to thank, I want to thank the board for two things. One, the time that you take to meet with me in between board meetings to go over all of these agenda items. I know sometimes to the viewing public, it might seem that we're skirting through the agenda, but it's through the amount of conversation and questions that you have asked that helped bring clarity to the agenda, so that it could be presented in a way where we have a swift meeting. So I appreciate the time that you paid to do that. Secondly, secondly, I also want to, also want to, or pushing the issue, pushing the issue, here's someone that has their audio on, because we've got an echo, pushing the issue, not that you had to push it, but prioritizing, let me put it that way, prioritizing the business continuity planning. When I was writing that chapter of the book, one of the things at the end of the chapter is a call to action, and the call to action was to board members to ensure, well, one, to have crisis management as a requirement for CEOs and job descriptions, but another was to board members to ensure that all of their colleges have a business continuity plan. And while I'm sure we would have gotten to it, you making it a priority, made sure that we were prepared for this pandemic in a little bit more of a way than we could have been or have seen other colleges. And it was that sense of urgency attaching it to my evaluation, and, you know, making it a priority that made sure that we got it done. So I want to give you some kudos for that, because it really is not a national trend, and I made sure that I mentioned it in that chapter. So I want to thank you for that commitment to the work that we're doing every month, and the long-range planning.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Beatty. I'll take a motion.
President Skaggs, this is Trustee Washington. I just wanted to say thank you for your prayers and condolences on the loss of my brother. I appreciate all of you being so supportive, and thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. We're thinking about you. All right, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks, everybody.